Good evening and welcome to the Orange Public Library for the Orange City Council Debate. Tonight, we will hear from current council members and their challengers. The debate format will be as such. Each candidate will receive a question and have two minutes to answer. Following each candidate's two-minute response, there will be a four- to five-minute debate period around a question given to each candidate. The timekeeper will yell "time" when the two minutes or five minutes have concluded. Prior to gathering, the candidates participated in a coin toss, and the first question goes to the agreed-upon winner of the coin toss. Okay. First question is for Ms. Turner.
Yes, ma'am.
What inspired you to run for the Orange City Council?
Okay, well, I think that I was, um, I've always wanted to serve. I think, um, service has been in my blood. My grandmother Joan Turner sat on many boards in her hometown, and I was raised to serve my community. I think it was Muhammad Ali who said that services is the rent that we pay here on earth. What actually made me want to run for city council is an apparent lack of leadership within our town. Uh, there's, um, I often hear other wards within the town have community meetings. We've not had one community meeting in our town, and all the community meetings that we've had, that none of them were led by current leadership. I think that the East Ward is one of the best wards in the town. We are the most diverse in the town, but our residents aren't heard. I think we are the unheard within our community. We have so many different nationalities within our community in the East Ward, and these residents are not being represented within the services that are being offered. As I walk around the town, I see nothing but abandoned properties. Rodents are infested within our towns, and it takes nothing but a phone call. It takes nothing from a phone call from, from, uh, current leadership to rectify some of those problems. So not only do I think that the homes are abandoned, I think that the residents in the East Ward have been abandoned. So why do I want to run for East Ward City Council? While for many years I wanted to run, now I feel like it's my duty to run. Because what, who would I be if I sit around and let the residents who I have grown to know and love continue to be unheard? Thank you.
Ms. Tarver, same question.
Good evening, good afternoon. Um, what inspired me to run? What inspired me to run was, it is basically the same amount of reasons that inspired me to become involved as an activist, mainly for the children within the city in 2016. Um, I somewhat agree with Ms. Turner's lack of leadership, lack of direction. Um, there were a number of things that were happening around that time, and there are a number of things that have happened since. Um, I decided to join the fray, if you want to put it that way, and contribute my time and my skills towards the betterment of Orange. Been a part of Orange community for about forty years. Um, my best friends were here growing up in high school. Uh, I met my wife, was introduced to her by one of my best friends, and she became a keyboard player in my band. About a year after that, uh, we got together, and we've been together ever since for about thirty-one years, which is pretty much the length that I've lived in Orange as well. So, uh, I want to make Orange better. Um, I think I would want to also say right now was, um, this debate, and really this race, is somewhat unique. Um, I tried to do a little history. I'm not sure there's ever been the full slate of candidates who have actually been current or former legislators within the city. So, um, some candidates may point out what they would want to do for Orange or their wishes, but I think this debate should really be focused on each candidate's resume, since we all have legislative experience. Um, I think the voters should focus on each candidate's history. Have they been trying to hold, uh, their peers within the legislative process accountable? Have they provided transparency? What have they personally done serving as legislators? Um, I think I can almost separate myself from the other two candidates in all of those areas, and tonight gives me the opportunity to convey that to the public. Thank you.
Ms. Turner, as you are aware, the purpose of city council is legislative. What new policies would you introduce as a council member?
Um, to begin, in the East Ward, looking at some of the main issues that we have, I would first plan to legislate a green team in the city of Orange. Um, my, my focus is quality of life. While other wards are fighting or are fighting for luxury items, right here in the East Ward, we're looking for simple quality of life issues. So I would introduce a green team. Whereas we're holding all the, the, the serp, the people who are supposed to provide services within the East Ward, that includes picking up trash, that includes making sure that homeowners are being inspected regularly to make sure that they are following the codes, making sure there's adequate programming for seniors, making sure our children and the, the services that we need to provide for our children, safety issues on the way to school, making sure all those things are put into place. So first, I would introduce some sort of green team legislature for the, for our residents. Next, all the, um, new development properties that we're, that we have coming into Orange, why not hold them accountable to put some sort of community, I don't know, community benefit? So if, if we're giving them pilots or we're giving them tax credits, why not make them, um, agree to put some of that money into, um, community centers for our students or for our residents? Why not make them, um, be held accountable for putting grants together for homeowners or, um, I don't know, something for residents to cut their, their rent or something like that? So for me, living in the East Ward, I feel like I am the East Ward. I know the residents, I walk around this, this ward to meet my community. I know these people personally. When COVID hit, I myself personally, I came out and I provided free services for not just seniors, but all the residents that lived within the East Ward, free therapy services. So we need service, thank you.
What's going on in Orange now is somewhat unique. I think there's really nothing wrong with the policies. Um, I think it's adherence to the policies and, um, making sure that the policies in place actually do work for the citizens. Um, there are too many council meetings where, uh, the citizens are, they, they speak, they contribute on the committee level, uh, many different committees, and then when it comes time to actually vote, uh, the citizens, many of whom have much experience in business, some with legislations, uh, those opinions and suggestions are ignored. Um, I think the legislators really need to listen to the community and the residents a lot more. Um, the policies that are in place could work much, much better. Um, so I'm not sure I would necessarily introduce any new policies. I would like to increase senior services within the, uh, within the city. The, the money is there to do that. Um, we just have to, first, before we address any, any new policies, getting into Drew Street, we really need to go through the budget with a fine-tooth comb. There's some pork there. Um, I have some problems with, uh, the experience level of some of the employees that are getting, maybe have low-level experience, but are getting paid mid to maybe high-level salaries. That's something that I first addressed in 2016, and I think it's also something that's ongoing. Um, replying to what Ms. Turner said concerning pilots and sharing of money, um, that's many concern that's been voiced many times. When I was school board president, I had a huge problem with the pilot money not being shared currently. It used to be shared with the, with the school board. Now it's not shared with the school board. We had a meeting with the mayor, he still doesn't want to share it with the school board. So that's something that we also need to address.
Okay. Ms. Tarver, what budgetary concern do you have?
Well, I didn't write any of this down. So, um, like I said, I, I think there's some pork in, in, in the budget. I don't like that the, uh, that, that cars are being leased for so many individuals within City Hall. I think that money should go elsewhere. Um, other budgetary concerns, um, the biggest cost of any corporation, of any business, is always human resources. Um, in 2016, when I was first asked to serve on the Budget Advisory Committee, one of the first things I noticed was that the Finance Department had ten employees. All of them were attending Rutgers University, taking Finance 101 classes. Um, they were only working maybe three to three and a half days a week. During the daytime, they were actually in class at Rutgers. So they're getting paid full-time, only working three and a half days a week, taking classes, and there also was no policy in place that if the city pays for their education, that they remain within, uh, the city, um, for a certain length of time so we can get a return on our investment in their education. Um, other budgetary concerns, like I said, there's just so many. I, I don't like that, uh, that the city is spending money on, um, you know, taking out bonds to help developers who get thirty-year tax abatements and aren't required to, uh, uh, provide any money towards the repayment of those bonds. Um, there, there's just so much that has to be done, and, um, I, you know, I've been successful with contributing that as school board member and school board president as far as the budgeting and the finance process. Um, my record is very, very public, there's a lot of video out there, so I would want to bring that experience as a city, as a city council person.
Ms. Turner, same question.
So since I'm running for East Ward City Council, I'm gonna address the problems that are in the East Ward. So the East Ward, immediately, I think there needs to be an audit for the services that are going into, to the East Ward. I'll say it again, the East Ward is unheard, we're underrepresented. We receive the least amount of benefits. We have Colgate Park over here that do not get the same amount of services that other wards in the park. And I don't, the only person that I blame is the person who is, is supposed to, who's getting paid to represent the East Ward. So first and foremost, that's number one. Number two, my major isn't in finance. But when we have, uh, people who we hire, like the CDAC, that make reports about the budget, we should probably listen to them. We shouldn't pretend to know something that we don't. If I don't have the expertise, what I've been trained to do is to call on the people who do. I'm not gonna sit up here and say what I can do. But what I can do is call on the experts to get the answers. I think, again, we need to look at all the new development that we come, that we have bringing into Orange. What are they doing for us? What sort of benefits are they bringing back to their, to our community? They're getting all type of, types of, um, tax credits. What, what services are they bringing back into, into, uh, the East Ward? We don't have a community center. We could have a Y. There's tons of programs that they could offer into the East Ward. So where's the money going, and why is not the East Ward getting it?
Can I put that, add to that a little bit? Are we still following the, the?
Yes.
Um, some things that Ms. Turner said. As far as the parks, I do agree with Colgate Park. Um, there's a portion of every tax bill called the open space tax, and that money is supposed to be used towards the improvements of all of the parks. Um, I disagreed when that tax was first implemented, I think back in 2018 maybe, twenty, no, 2017 is when it was first implemented. Um, we already had money in the budget for the parks, but that money was not being used for the parks and was getting re-appropriated towards other uses. Um, I don't agree with the raises, uh, the, the over, the exorbitant overtime pay that's being, uh, you know, currently being, um, implemented by the administration. Um, but now that the open space tax is in, in, in place for the parks, um, it needs to go towards all of the parks. Um, regarding what Ms. Turner said concerning the East Ward focus, um, we're, we're extremely small city. I'm not su, we can probably introduce legislation, but most of our legislation has to, I think, be citywide. Um, we can fight for certain things within the city, uh, within a certain ward, but again, our, our monies are finite. Um, if anything gets implemented, it, it should be a citywide implementation of whatever gets introduced. And lastly, as far as the pilots, again, um, the mayor's control and, and the council are in control of where those pilot monies go. Um, the developers don't. The reason that the money is not getting shared when it comes to the administration is because they choose not to share it. It's nothing that the developers have any control over. Um, again, that money can be shared. It can be shared with the school district, it can be shared for other purposes, but the mayor chooses not to. And, and the council, that's not something that they push. There's no accountability between the council and the mayor at this point. I would like to be one of those voices that provide a lot more accountability than already exists.
I just wanna, um, one of the concerns that I have is that a lot of things that are going on, and again, well, let me address this first. A lot of things that I go, that are going on, which is why I think that we are not successful in achieving the goals, or the lack of goals that we have set, is that everybody is trying to satisfy personal vendettas, and every question that Mr. Tarver has answered has been concerning what somebody else is doing and personal about the mayor and whoever. The people in the East Ward are not heard. There have not been anything new introduced in the ward. The experiences of the people and the needs of the people in the South Ward are not the same as the people in the East Ward. You cannot sit there and say that it should be the same. There's apparent differences within the South Ward and in the East Ward. And I know for a fact, because I represent every single person in, in the East Ward. I grew up in public housing. I was a working, single mother. I went to school, put my kids to school. I represent the low class, I represent the middle class, I represent everybody in the East Ward. There's no way that a, a, a person that's running for city council could sit there and say that the, the services and the benefits for the, all the other wards within our small gray city should be sufficient for a town that need, for a ward that needs the most. That upsets me to hear you say that.
Um, to counter that as well, um, I'm an East Ward resident, uh, the whole time that I've lived in Orange. Um, I was not born with a silver spoon. You know, me and my wife worked hard for the education that we have and, and the accomplishments that we've had, but we are not rich by any means. We live half a block away from the Old Peppermint Lounge location. Um, there's nothing personal, the mayor's record is a lot of, a lot of.
Time.
One more. I just want to say I wasn't born with a silver spoon in my mouth either.
I never said that.
You said spoon.
Please.
I said spoon.
Okay. Ms. Turner, what is your education background?
Um, I started off at Estes County College. I have an associate's degree in, uh, social justice and advocacy. I have a bachelor's degree from Montclair State in psychology. My first master's, um, is in social work policy and policy from Mon, from Rutgers University. Also have another master's in educational leadership. And on Friday, I will defend my dissertation in family science and human development, so I'll be Dr. Fatima Turner.
Okay.
On top of that, I received many certificates, um, but I won't write.
Ms. Tarver?
Yeah, my education is alternative. I attended Rutgers University. Um, I grew up a musician, and that's always been my first love. After attending Rutgers for three years, I actually stopped attending because I was making so much money doing music. Um, I educated myself in, in the business of music and in the, uh, you know, being a musician and also a producer and engineer. Um, but first, I'm family-oriented. So after a number of years of that, working evenings and nights and not seeing my wife, even though she's a musician, not seeing her as much as I'd like, or my grandmother who raised me, um, I decided to make the flip. I went back to school. Um, I got my certification for being a computer programmer. Actually got my first job while I was still in school. I was a computer programmer and analyst with Gucci. And that's where I extended all of my business knowledge as far as finance, warehousing, human resources, uh, budgeting, had to write programs for all of those areas. Um, I'm actually on record on saving the company millions of dollars with a lot of my initiatives that weren't asked of me. They weren't projects that came to my desk from a project manager or higher up. I took the initiative to actually make the company better. And like I said, I'm on record as, having saved the company with certain projects millions of dollars at a time. Um, that's where I cut my teeth as far as my knowledge regarding public administration. I don't have a background in that, but again, um, my six years as, uh, advocate for the public and my three years serving as actual legislator with the school board, um, I know that I've accomplished a lot, and like I said, everything is on record. Thank you.
Ms. Tarver, do you believe all elected officials should attend the classes offered in Rutgers University that will allow them to become better public servants?
Um, the elected officials?
Yes.
I think that's a personal choice if they want to attend them. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be a requirement. It shouldn't be a requirement. I mean, that's just more money from the budget. Going to educate somebody that ran for office if they don't know what they're doing coming into office or at least have a heat base line, then I, I don't think they should be up on, on, on the dais at all. Um, if they want to do that, that's fine, but I don't think there should be any sort of, for the employee, sure, but as legislators, no, I, I, I don't necessarily, I don't, I don't agree with that. And nor should there be any type of reimbursement for them taking, uh, any Rutgers University colleges. Um, there, there are public administration, um, uh, workshops that go on, go on throughout the year, as well as, um, conferences where administrators within the city can attend and, and gain more knowledge. But as far as, uh, it's something that, uh, the, the city reimburses them for as far as their private education, I don't necessarily agree with that.
Ms. Turner, same.
I mean, I don't know how somebody who could have sat on a school board and somebody who is an advocate for children and communities could say that it's not required of people who are responsible for the livelihood of our community members not be accountable for getting the education that they need to make educated and informed decisions. These decid, you said that, you said it should be, but it's my turn.
Sure.
It's, um, uh, you, I, so I'll answer the question. Absolutely, it should be required. I sit on a school board where it's required that we take, um, classes. I can, again, I'm not gonna sit around and, and pretend to know all that I need to know. I'm a lifelong learner. So I, I do believe that it should be mandatory, it should not be optional. Any program or any entity that has the, that is responsible for the lives of its residents, they should be required. And especially at a school like Rutgers, which is, again, my alma mater, but yes, we should be required to take ongoing classes.
I can respond to that?
Yes.
Thank you. I never said that education was not key. I said that all the legislators within the city on the school board side and, and the city council side are, uh, have conferences and other education opportunities available to them. I'm all for education. I'm all for some, 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 I'm all for anyone, including legislators, educating themselves privately. But the question specifically asked about Rutgers University, should our legislators be required to take classes at Rutgers University? And again, I say no, regarding her reference to the school board. Uh, the school's system and, and the state Department of Education does not require that school board members take private class, take, take collegiate-level courses. They're required to take training via the New Jersey School Board Association, but they are not required to take classes on, on any type of collegiate level.
Yes.
What do you mean by collegiate? Cause do you mean collegiate like it's, um, it's going towards a degree? Cause from my understanding, the classes are offered by Rutgers University as a training or certificated or whatever you have it credit to go towards whatever classes that they want us to take. You're saying on a collegiate level. They're not telling you that you have to get a degree, but they are telling you that you do need classes to educate yourself on whether it be finance, budget, uh, whatever it be.
Again, it's not a requirement. The question, the question says, do you believe all elected officials should attend classes offered in Rutgers University? That's on the collegiate level. If they want to attend those classes, absolutely. I just don't think, it's a, it should be a requirement, and right now, it's not required at the municipal level, and it's definitely absolutely, positively a thousand percent not a requirement on the school board level.
It's not a requirement that they take classes on a collegiate level, but it is a requirement that they take classes. You said it should be their choice.
It's a requirement, not that they take classes. It's a requirement that they attend, that they attend the New Jersey School Board Association training.
Absolutely.
That those aren't classes, that's training.
Training, classes.
Again, this, the, the question focused on Rutgers University. That's what I addressed.
So what was, did the question ask Rutgers University or other?
It's.
Okay.
Ms. Turner, do you own a home in Orange?
Yes.
No.
No?
No. My father-in-law owns a home. Um, we just, we, after we got married, we were gonna move out, but we decided to stay and help my mother-in-law, who was going through a number of health issues. They have a three-family home. We take up basically two-thirds of the home, contribute to the payment of all the bills and the taxes. But no, the, the home is not in my name.
Okay. Ms. Tarver, have you been actively involved in voluntary organizations in the community? If so, please identify them and the role you played.
Sure, well, my, my first voluntary role was as a citizen budget advisory committee member, okay? Again, during that meeting, I, I brought up many things. I was the first to publicly bring up the Willis Edwards situation and why the council at that time approved Willis Edwards going to Seton Hall and using a, a large amount of money paying for his doctorate degree. It was later on revealed that the council members approved whether they reviewed the budget or not, excuse me, the bill listing or not. They also, the administration also spent money on someone writing his dissertation. Um, that's all been brought out by the FBI and then federal court, so it's fact at this point. As, as far as, uh, other things with voluntary organizations, um, I, my first, uh, big fray, ed, education has always been my, 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 uh, biggest concern, and I had huge concerns with the direction of education within Orange. So, um, when I addressed the school board at that time, uh, with certain moves they were making, the accountability that they were holding the, the previous superintendent to, there really wasn't much answer. So I started addressing some, informing some parents of the very extremely low level of education that we had back then and still have back now. And I asked parents would they want to have school board elections because back then, uh, the mayor appointed school board members. I founded a, uh, a, a committee. Um, we put the question, we got the number of signatures, put the question on the ballot, and now we have school board elections. Um, the school board members from that time actually spent eighty, a little over eighty-one thousand dollars of the kids' money suing, personally suing me, my wife, and to, to stop school board elections. They've lost in court for, uh, for time, so.
Ms. Turner?
So I'll answer the question of what I've done. What was the question? I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Question, yes. Have you been actively involved in voluntary organizations in the community? If so, please identify them and the role you played.
Okay, so upon moving here, um, the first initiative that I started was Batteries Not Included, where we would go to Orange Park and I would gather community, the children from the community, and we would, um, engage in activities that did not include batteries. So we did jump rope, we did things like jacks, we did things like, um, hopscotch, just a way to kind of get the kids going and active and get them out of, off of their phones and off of the computers. I'm a part, I'm currently a part of the Neighborhood Watch within my community. I'm currently helping with the Colgate Park Initiative. I'm currently, I started this in, during COVID. I'm currently... I started this during COVID. I talk about it all the time because I'm proud of it. Service for seniors, where I offer free services, free therapy service to any seniors. And I assist any person in the East Ward that needs therapy service. If I can't accommodate them, I send them... I give them the resources that they need. I currently do Soup Saturdays, where I give out soup to people within the communities. I help out with the food pantry. If any seniors within... My ward mostly, but if any seniors call me, I go to the East Ward and I help. I mean, I go to the food pantry or wherever I need to go. I pick up food and I personally deliver it. The seniors in my community have my personal cellphone number. If they need a ride to the store, I pick them up and I take them to the store. I have also created... Helped create the initiative on the school board because a lot of our... The documents that we had go out and the school board was only in English. So now all of our documents go out in Spanish and Haitian Creole because these populations have always been unheard. I was also... I'm also a school board member where I sit on the... I'm the chair of the PR committee. I'm talking fast because I do a lot of stuff. I'm the chair of the PR committee. I sit on the curriculum committee and I sit on the policy committee. I also joined with the U.S. Tennis Association to bring tennis to the Orange School Board. So every student in the Orange school system is now learning tennis. And I'm also on the Neighborhood Cleanup Committee for Orange.
Just add a few things. Yeah, again, my time sitting on this... My three years sitting on the school board from 2018 through last year. I sat on every last committee that was within the school board, made many, many contributions. As far as the documents going out in multiple languages, that's something that happened before you were a school board member. It absolutely is, and it's on record, and it's on the website. It started as early as 2019. I was the person that actually started providing transparency with the school board and initiated the live streaming and the public broadcast of the school board meetings that never happened before I was school board president. As far as the seniors, I haven't... I don't have any official organizations, but I have a ton of personal relationships with a number of seniors. Sadly, a number of my friends within a number of those buildings even died during this whole COVID mess. So the whole senior topic is really emotional to me because some of whom were close friends before COVID hit. But to see someone pass because of this pandemic is just tragic. Again, my contributions to a number of... Me and my wife's contributions to a ton of seniors throughout the... Throughout the city. It's not through any official organizations. It's strictly on a personal and friendship level, and it's something that we've been doing ever since we've been together.
Just to provide some feedback, none of these... All of these were... The majority of these were my initiatives that I do on my time. And the other thing is, you said you sat on all the committees. As a school board president, you would sit and attend all the school board committees. But since you keep bringing up the school board, I want to just ask if you would share with us the results of you being brought up on charges for spending money on the school board that wasn't allocated... That was supposed to be allocated for the children. So you were asked to resign from the school board. I'm asking, what are the results? What happened with the charges that were brought up?
That's something you're educating me on because there was never any charges brought up against me. Now, can I have the chance to respond? First, you're wrong about the president sitting on every last committee.
I said attend.
Can I answer? If they're attending, then they're sitting on that committee as well.
Okay.
First of all, they're not required to. All right? Only the three members who are appointed at the beginning of each school year are required to attend those meetings. The president is not required to attend. If they choose to attend, they can attend, but they are not required. My first two years, I was not president. I still served on every last committee on my own accord. Again, that's public record. If anybody wants to contact the school board and send in an open request, Open Public Records Act request for the minutes of all of those meetings. Some of those committees I was not even appointed on too. But I still took the initiative to sit on all of those committees. Concerning the charges, I'll...
Mr. Tarver, are you committed to a yearly survey of families, students, community residents, faculty, and staff about what they see as major strengths and shortcomings of the city council? If so, are you committed to publicly sharing the results?
Absolutely. Like I said, my... One of the first words out of my mouth when I sat as a citizens budget advisory committee member was transparency. These are public institutions, and they're paid for with our tax dollars. All right? Anything that goes on should be public knowledge. Many times, the public knowledge is... Excuse me, many times, the information is withheld. There's one resident, Katelyn Gordon, who's really a hidden figure within Orange. She's always bringing the city to court because they do not adhere to Open Public Records Act requests. And she's won many, many times. This past year, I submitted Open Public Records Act requests to the school district, three times, actually. I haven't gotten a response anytime or any documents from the school board or the school district. Transparency is a huge thing. Again, these are all public entities paid for with public dollars. So concerning the shortcomings of the city and committed to publicly sharing the results, absolutely. That's what I did as a school board member and school board president. A lot of times, it was not liked that I shared that information. But if I can still use a little bit more of my time, again, I have to correct on the record, Ms. Turner, falsely stating that I was brought up on charges. There are no ethics charges that have ever been filed against me. School board members aren't even in control of any funds. So I have no clue what she's talking about. All of these school board meetings are on video because of me. But even if they aren't on video, they're on audio that you can get from the school district. Oprah, all of those...
Time.
All of those meetings, and I guarantee you, there's no mention of any...
Time.
Sure.
Okay. Ms. Turner?
Can you please read the question?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are you committed to a yearly survey of families, students, community residents, faculty, and staff about what they see as major strengths and shortcomings of the city... Of the city council? If so, what... Are you committed to publicly sharing your results?
So absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. As I talked about my education, my education is solely lies in social justice. I am an advocate for diversity, for equity, and inclusion. And we cannot do that without being transparent. So absolutely, again, my platform is being a voice for the residents. And right now, the residents don't have a voice. I don't think any... I don't think... Not just the East Ward. I don't think the entire city of Orange is being heard, especially when we have current leadership just blatantly not answering the questions of the residents. So I think that's a problem. Citywide. So absolutely, I believe in transparency. And in order for us to be inclusive of all the residents, absolutely, I... My answer would be yes.
Concerning transparency, again, the mayor and some council persons are huge backers of yours. If the transparency is not being provided, it's because your backers are not providing the transparency. It's been going on for years, and all the residents know it. All the residents complain about it. Concerning your background, social justice, and education, my first experience with you personally was when you actually sent out a negative campaign email to the whole city, falsely accusing me of being a Republican when I've been a registered Democrat ever since I turned eighteen. But on top of that, you actually included a reference to my fourteen-year-old daughter. And that's public record. It's public record to the point that the local talk newspaper actually wrote an article that still exists on their website denouncing you and your backers and your team for doing that. Concerning your time as a school board member, when you advocated for using education funds for the mayor's recreation programs. Again, nice cause, but the education monies are not free flowing within our district. And those money should be strictly used for education. As a board member, if you chose to do that, fine. But one of the points that you actually made when you were arguing that point during the November twenty-one meeting, was that we need to... And these programs are for elementary kids, K through eight. One of the points that you actually said was, "We have to make sure we approve these mayor's recreation programs." If we don't, our kids are going to be out in the streets knocking people over the heads and stealing their cars. I actually contacted a few weeks ago the New Jersey Uniform Crime Division. There have been no carjackings for the past seven years of their reports by any juveniles K through eight. All right? I do not think you should have used that as a talking point to... For you... To support your choice to use education monies for the mayor's recreation programs. You're a public official. You ought to be careful what you say, and especially with how you use and refer to children, and especially my daughter. That was very traumatic for me and my wife to go through to actually see this in a negative campaign email. It's something I definitely want to put out there. Because like I said at the beginning of this debate, we're all public officials now. We all have... Our history is on... Our resumes are on record. So that's something I absolutely have to point out.
Okay, so to be clear, my comment in reference to when... If we don't provide community resources for inner-city youth, this is research-based. Research shows... Studies show that when there's a lack of community involvement, that it's more likely for low-income children to engage in criminal activities. So let's be clear. Secondly, the email that was sent referred to your daughter as the next Michelle Obama. And you would be appalled by that because you're... In the times that I've watched you, your misogynistic tactics do not respect women on that sort of level. Secondly... Secondly, on the... If you were so appalled by that on Election Day, after that letter came out, you sat there with Ms. Wells and you advocated for yourself, Crockett, and the young lady that was running with her. As soon as Ms. Wells left, you dropped their literature and you started endorsing me and telling people to vote for me and you. So if you were... And I put that on my children. So if you were so appalled by me calling your daughter Michelle Obama, why didn't you then endorse me?
I'm going to say here publicly, and I have Ms. Wells, she's right here in the audience, that's a flat-out lie. That's a flat-out... You're following the back of the mayor and lying at will. All right? That is a flat-out lie. I never, never... First of all, I never endorsed Ms. Crockett.
She was there.
Ms. Wells was standing right there.
She left.
She did. I left before her.
No.
I was... Can I finish?
Please.
I left before Ms. Wells because I was sick. I was in and out of hospitals. And I'm on public record as saying that. It's on video. From the summer, I broke my foot. I came down with shingles. I had some other ailments. I was in and out of the hospital. I went out on election morning for a little under ninety minutes. And Ms. Wells saw me and she said, "Look, if you don't go home, I'm going to call your wife because you know you're not supposed to be out here." I left. I left before she left. I never advocated for you because I knew who your backers were. I never advocated for you because I know what you put in that email. That email that did not say she would be the next Michelle Obama. You said, "Because I'm a poor father and because I'm a Republican, I'm setting this bad example for my fourteen-year-old daughter, who could be Michelle Obama or Kamala Harris." That's what the email said. And if anybody wants copies of the email, leave me your email address. I'll email you the email as well as the local talk... The local talk article denouncing her actions.
Mr. Tarver?
Yes.
If you are selected by voters, what are your priorities for the city of Orange Township? And why? Why and how did you select these issues?
Again, my issues... My first issue is always the children. It's always the children. That's why I jumped into this. I never wanted to be involved with politics. One of the council persons... Actually, the team of council persons that were running, as well as when Councilman Cooley was running for mayor, they kind of cornered me at White Castle. And their campaign manager saw me, who I had known, and he said, "You know, there's somebody we need to bring on the team." I had been telling them for a year, "No," but I finally decided to then help them. But I told them from the beginning, "My focus is really on the board of it and really on the children." Okay? That's always been my primary focus. As I've gone through the next six years, my focus has expanded. First, it expanded to the seniors because I have... I know a lot of people in the senior community. Then it expanded to the community in general. When I started... When I became a citizens budget advisory committee member, when I attended numerous, numerous council meetings that still exist on video or you can get the audio of those meetings from the city clerk Joyce Lanier's office. Or you can actually download the minutes to see exactly how many meetings I attended and what I was actually speaking about. So I advocate for the city as a whole for many, many, many different areas. There are so many things that actually contribute to the betterment of Orange. But the first thing, like I said, is accountability. As a council person, I will absolutely hold whoever's in City Hall responsible and accountable for the budgeting that they want to do, for the actions that are taken, for the corruption that's actually happened. And that's proof of the FBI. The summer that I actually started serving within the city on a budget advisory committee, within one month, the FBI raided the library. Six months later, they raided City Hall. And they raided it another two, three, maybe three or four times since then. So the whole tree needs to be shaken. But if I am elected, whatever I discover, I will definitely make public.
Ms. Turner?
Can you read the question?
Yes. If you are selected by voters, what are your priorities for the city of Orange Township? Why and how did you select these issues?
So to be clear, I stand on my own two feet. I have my own mind. I'm not... I'm controlled by no one. There's tons of people that support me within this town, but I still make my own decisions. To... For someone to suggest that I'm a puppet for backers is absurd when I have built a home on my own without the support of anyone. So let's just be clear. So first and foremost is to investigate. I'm a researcher. So my first goal before I do anything is to investigate, research, and make an educated decision based on what's best for the community in which I serve. That's first and foremost. That's what I believe in. That's what I plan to do. If I am elected city councilwoman of the East Ward, first and foremost, like I said, a green team. We need to clean up the East Ward. I walked on one of the streets, Bourbon Street, a few weeks ago, and it was full of trash. All I did was come out there, start picking up trash. All I did was start making calls to City Hall and say, "Come on, what's the problem?" These issues aren't hard to address. All it takes is somebody who cares. You know, I quote all the time, "Unless somebody like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to change. It's not." The problem is, nobody cares. Everybody is out for themselves, out for optics, out to make themselves look good, out to make somebody else look bad. And nobody is for the residents. Nobody is looking... I have not heard anyone say one... Talk about one issue that is specific to the East Ward. But I'll tell you the issues that I'm going to address. Trash, garbage, abandoned buildings, and a lack of resources. Period.
Can I respond? I never said you were a puppet. I said they were your backers.
I said imply.
I wasn't implying that either. I'm easy to get. If it doesn't come out of my mouth, then it's nothing being implied. I speak facts. I don't give my opinions. I speak facts. All right? You take my words as they come out of my mouth. So I never said you were a puppet. You take my words as they come out of my mouth, so I never said you were a puppet. Me trying to make it look bad, um, he's doing a pretty good job of that all by himself. And, and the FBI, I'm sure the FBI agrees with me on that. You know, you, again, again, you being in background in education, social advocate and everything, I, I, I'm, I'm still gonna keep circling back to the fact that, you know, since you have a background in education and advocating for children, it just should be a baseline not to include children in your negative campaigning. It, it, it should just be a baseline. So that worries me, especially when you finally got elected to the school board. I, it, it's just, you know, it, it, I, I, I would like people to get elected by, by speaking truth. There's a lot of things, you, you brought up me being brought up on charges. You said I'm advocating for you on election day. This, this is just lies. And it, it just bothers me to no end. I mean, I've been here forty, you know, between thirty and forty years, my, my wife's family has been here a little over a hundred years. I'm so attached to the city, I used to have bands, I played in the Peppermint, the Manor, you know. It, 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 it bothers me. I don't know what else to say. But again, I back up every, anybody here, or anybody watching the video, I'm live streaming it with my own camera right here. If anybody sees this, they can always contact me via my email, that's public, and via my phone mail, that's pu- my phone number, that's public. I will text you official documents, newspaper articles, emails by my opponents that will one hundred percent, one hundred percent back up everything I just said. All right? I'm, I'm putting that out there right now.
Once again, the mayor does not pay my bills. The mayor, the mayor doesn't pay my bills. You keep talking about, why are you talking about the mayor when you, when you're talking about me and my credentials? The mayor hasn't paid my bills, he hasn't sat in one class, he hasn't gotten one degree. I don't give a crap about, my goal is to, to look out for myself, my children, and my community. The mayor is accountable for him also. I don't have a problem with disagreeing with the mayor. I've disagreed with the mayor on, we disagree all the time. I don't have a problem disagreeing with the mayor, let's be clear. Like, I don't have a problem standing up to you, I don't have a problem standing up to him. And again, for you to sit here and say that you did not tell people to vote for Turner and Tarver, and say that that was a lie, that's a lie. And you keep bringing up my education. I work for, what's the problem with my education? I, I, you keep bringing up my education. I'm flapping for myself. Not only do I have an education, I have a daughter with a master's degree. So, 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 so not only am I educator, I birth educators. Let's be clear. And you keep bringing up what you, like, you, I want my city, the person who is my councilman, I want him to talk about what he brings to the table, what, not what other people don't bring to the table. What do you bring to the table besides you growing up in Orange and living in your parents' house and being a musician? I have the tools to be the next councilwoman. I have the education, I have the passion, and I have the determination.
Can I respond? I see your hand raised, if I can just get ten seconds in. I never said anything about your education.
Time.
I'm glad this is recorded. All the other stuff I'll respond to.
Okay. Ms. Turner? With the prior question of priorities and issues, how would they impact the municipal budget? And how would you implement your priorities legislatively?
So, um, I think I, I answered that, and, and I don't want to sound redundant. But again, holding these developers accountable, I, I said that, again, I'm not gonna be redundant. Auditing, doing audits to make sure that we are allocating funds appropriately, and making sure the East Ward is getting what we need. Making sure the current people on our city council are being educated, so they're making educated and informed decisions. Making sure that they are listening to specialty groups like, I know I always say the name wrong, CDAC, when they make educated suggestions, and making sure that we follow through. And, yeah, just exactly what I said, making sure that our, our children have safe spaces, how can our children be safe if they're walking past abandoned housing? I walked down another street, uh, up the other day, and it's, it was a, um, it was a, a, a piece of wood with nails sticking out, like, and when I talk to residents, our residents do not know our current councilperson. When, when they ask me, "Who are you running against?", and I tell them, they have no clue, they've never met him. That's a problem. Thank you.
Mr. Tarver, same question?
Can you repeat the question? I'm not sure which portion of this question that Deborah asked.
Okay. The question was, with priorities and issues, how would they impact the municipal budget? How would you implement your priorities legislatively?
I guess this is the second half of this paragraph. Like I said, there, there's just, there's, there's too much to address. But it can be addressed, and it can be addressed responsibly. The budget is, like I said, it's pretty much out of control right now. We have to gain control of the spending. The, the spending is not what it should be. We have to find new avenues of generating revenue for the city. Right, like I said, right, right now is just a huge issue. The, the biggest, most current issue right now, again, my priority is the citizens and the residents. This new revow on properties that just happened. And, and I, and I want to kind of clear something up, because a lot of the residents that I talk to as I'm going through the East Ward, they have a little bit of a misunderstanding with this revow. They think that the revow is actually the reason that their taxes have a huge chance of going up in July of twenty twenty-two. It's not the reassessed values that are making the taxes go up. It's the new decided-upon tax rate that the council decides to implement and get approval from, from the county board that will make the taxes go up. When that letter was sent around to all, all of the homes, the numbers that the, the administration sent out, the tax rate would be dropped from five point seven eight to somewhere around three point three. But that three point three actually results in the raising of taxes, in the raising of tax amounts. If we wanted to keep the current tax payments that residents are paying right now, that, that tax rate has to be dropped down to somewhere around like two point nine eight or two point nine nine.
Time.
Time. Mr. Tarver, what is your understanding of the tax levy, and how many are there?
I, I just started off with the tax levy there, so I guess I'll continue. Again, when the budget comes in front of the council this summer, and hopefully I'm sitting on the council to be able to participate in that process, my first goal is to make sure that taxes do not get raised on residents anymore. I do not want to see households have their taxes increase anywhere between eighteen, two thousand dollars, all the way up to five thou- you know, four or five thousand dollars. It's, it's just ridiculous that that would end up happening. I don't agree with that letter that was sent out by the administration saying that this is an estimate, because that, that estimate that includes, that includes that tax increase is really them raising the tax amount that people will pay. It's all a municipal decision, has nothing to do with the reassessed values. It's a, it's a strictly municipal decision to raise that tax rate.
Yes.
As, as far as the tax levy situation in general, I, my, my opponent, Councilman Cooley, he's voted to raise taxes eight years in a row ever since he's been elected. All right? We've had councilpeople come into the meetings over and over again, talking about the raising of taxes, how, how it affects the residents. It's to the point now, after eight years in a row, residents can't afford the taxes, the taxes that they have to pay so much, that a number of residents are just considering moving now. With, you know, they've invested in their homes for long amounts of time, and now to, for them to have to consider up, you know, uprooting and, and moving to other cities, it, it, I, I think it's just tragic, it's extremely tragic. Ms. Turner addressing me, uh, living off of my parent, my in-laws. Again, I'm, I'm gonna speak about this even though it's a private issue. My grandmother, my mother-in-law, rather, was going through partial paralysis. And right when we were about to move, she asked, "Will we stay in the house and help?" That's the decision why we decided to live with our family and continue to help. Both me and my wife were employed, unemployed, were educated, and were family-oriented. So, um, I will not speak before I know the truth. All right?
Okay.
All right.
I said live with, not live off. Because I don't know who you live off of, and I would never say that, but I think that, what was the question?
The question was, what is your understanding of the tax levy, and how many are there?
So my understanding of a tax, of the tax levy are monies that are collected from property owners and commercial owners, business owners, that's allocated for the town. And then according to the research that I've done, there are four, which is county, municipal, school, and open space. There's also a small library tax on there, so that might be considered one. But I will argue that we should also consider, I don't know how it would work, but perhaps cannabis, because whereas I, from my understanding, what we need to do is do things to offset our taxes. So when cannabis came about within our community, multiple, multiple city council members voted against it. And I do know that Maplewood, if I'm not mistaken, within the next week are opening up for business, and they have the option to come directly into Orange and deliver cannabis. But since the transaction is going to be done in Maplewood, they'll receive the revenue for it.
That is correct.
So it's, 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 it's things like that when they come through. In, in my opinion, this is why we need to regulate our city council members being informed, so they can make informed decisions. Because I honestly don't, I honestly don't think they are aware of how we can offset taxes. Because that would have driven tons of revenue to the city of Orange, and perhaps our taxes would not have gone up. But when we have council members that ignore, what, eighty-six percent of the residents? Then that's a problem. And for me, I would rather not vote on someone who doesn't listen.
Time.
Can I respond to that a little bit? Yeah, as far as the cannabis issue, I've never used cannabis. So may, may, maybe I'm missing out. I, I didn't say you did, but it's my time to respond. As far as what the residents voted on, absolutely, it's something that the council should address. If I was a council member when that vote came in front of me, I, I probably would have voted the same way. I don't know anything about the industry. It, it, it was something that came on within, uh, literally months, not two or three months, but still months. And I like to vote on things when I have a full knowledge of it. When, I'm not defending the, the council person's votes, but when they did vote, they agreed with the vast majority of the state that decided to not kill the implementation of, not the implementation of cannabis sales within the city, but, but delay it. So there is a delay, and they can also revisit it. If I'm elected council person, I absolutely would not mind sitting with the, the residents, gaining all of the information. Because, well, one thing I do agree with Ms. Turner on is that I don't think that the council persons were fully, are fully educated on the issue. But it's something that I do want to fully educate myself on, because the vast majority of the city wants the city to move in that direction. So again, I'm not against it, but if I am elected, it will be a few months before I start voicing my opinion as a council person, because I want to have all of that legislation, all of that information, all of the recent state decisions in front of me before I make that final decision.
If I'm not mistaken, they killed it. They killed it. It's, it's not delayed, it's denied. And all of that revenue that could be, have been funneled through the city of Orange is now going to Maplewood, because if I'm not mistaken, that's the closest town. So it's not denied, it's killed. And it's, 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 it's things like this, and I didn't say it, Mr. Tarver said it himself, he would have voted it down, and that's exactly what happened. And we don't need council people like that to sit on our council.
Can I, can I respond? I did not say I would have voted, first, first of all, you, you're misinformed again. So you really need to come to these debates, and especially when you're talking to the people, you really need to educate yourself a little bit.
Educate me.
Read the legislation and read the, and read the state language concerning that vote that happened last August, I believe. It was not killing it. They can revisit that at any time that they want, just like a number of the other municipalities in the state. The municipality has the power to revisit that anytime they want. They didn't kill it. It's not killed, and it's not once and for all. What they decided to do was that we don't want to vote yes, and then, because if they voted yes, it would be a permanent decision. They said that they did not want to make that permanent decision when they voted. All right? So educate yourself on that, first of all. You keep bringing up this stuff as far as what I said about you and everything, I mean, and, and, and things I said to turn to me, that absolutely did not happen, I mean, we're on video.
It happened, sir.
And, 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 like I said, anybody watching this can, can rewind the video. What you just said is just not true.
What, which one, which statement?
A, a number of them, especially the last one.
Be specific.
You're talking about the vote, you were also talking about, um, saying that I, I, I would not, I would, I would vote it down and not pass it. I did not say that. I said I, I would have made that vote because I knew that that vote is a delay. And it can be voted on and passed at any future date. Like I said, when, if I'm elected council person, it's something I absolutely will revisit. I don't know what the current council persons are doing as far as this issue right now, but it's something that I will revisit. But I want to put out there right now, as a resident, and I have a lot of friends in the district who support the sale of cannabis within the city. I want to educate myself, and all of my friends and all the people that know me know, I'm gonna make a very informed decision, and a positive decision for the city, concerning not only the cannabis issue, but many, many other issues. My record is proven as an advocate, as an activist, and as a school board member. So everybody knows how I roll on, on a number of these issues, and how I make very, very informed and positive and great decisions.
Just lastly, it was killed. They are in court now, the mayor vetoed it, they had a meeting to override it, they're in court. And I'm not gonna keep repeating myself, I said what I said, thank you.
All right, Ms., Ms. Turner, what is the impact on the municipal budget and the residents in the city of Orange Township?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yes.
I'm so sorry.
It's all right. What is the impact on the municipal budget and the residents in the city of Orange Township?
What's the impact?
What is the impact on the municipal budget?
I mean, we, the monies that are allotted for our communities are based off of what we collect. So, again, we need trans, we need transparency, and we need constant audits to make sure money is allocated appropriately so that we could have all the services that we need within our community. Again, I think I, I answered this already. We, we keep allowing, um, all these developments coming in, and we're not getting anything out of it. It's not doing the city of Orange, or at least the East Ward, any good. And so I think that I've answered that question, but I think that we need to basically hold the town accountable, hold the city accountable, so that we can get the services that we need.
Mrs. Tarver?
The spending that occurs within Orange is made public on, uh, maybe twice a month via the bill list, all right? Anybody can go to, uh, to the City Hall or the City Council website and download those bill lists that are voted on twice a month. and download those bill lists that are voted on twice a month and see exactly where the spending is occurring. So that... There is some transparency. There's just no transparency as far as, uh, the, the, uh, the, uh, the, the reasoning behind these decisions. Um, also, a number of those line items, uh, specific, uh, residents ask for some, uh, more complete transparency regarding, uh, some of those line item spending. And, um, some of that line item spending and, and it's not given. Again, when I was a CBAC member and even the last iteration of the citizen budget advisory committee make recommendations to the council, the recommendations are ignored. The, the spending moves forward. Many residents aren't in agreeance with it. Again, revenue is, is collected through the, the, the five taxes that does occur, uh, that, that actually makes up the taxes on, on, on the city and, and, and the residents. We have to make sure that this summer, and it's, I think this is probably the most important election that Orange has probably had. We need to make sure that we vote in a new majority of, of councilpersons who absolutely have the goal of stopping the out of control spending, uh, stopping the out of control spending of COVID monies, um, where it was reported that, um, five and six-figure overtime monies were, were, uh, paid out to employees who already make five and six figures salaries.
That's a fact.
Um, it, 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 just like I said, there's just a lot of out of control stuff that needs to happen. But, um, again, my, my record is, is clear and public as far as how I contributed to the school board and their spending, the suggestions that I made in public meeting that the past and current superintendent have decided to implement.
This is the final question for both candidates. Starting with Mr. Tarver, what is your election platform?
I think we've kind of been speaking on that all along. Um, my priority is the children. My priority is the seniors. My priority is part of the residents as a, as a whole. I want to be a councilmember to, to speak for them, to act for them, to legislate responsibility, to provide accountability, to be transparent with everything that's going on within City Hall because it does not exist right now. It just doesn't. It's been my platform since 2016, when I first started, when I first jumped into the fray. It, it hasn't changed in six years. Uh, the thing is, I, as a legislator on the school board, I've been highly successful in, in implementing my platform and, and my beliefs to make a positive impact on the school district. When the school district was spending nearly $200,000 a month on repairs because the, the orange water is bad and just tearing up pipes, not only in the school district, but in a ton of homes, people are getting pinhole, pinhole leaks and pipes busting because orange water, water system is terrible.
Exactly.
And I know that some, there's some repairs going on right now, but it's still terrible because I just had two pipe busts burst in my house within the last four months.
Me too.
It's strictly because of the hard water. Um, they're, uh, just, but I made the decision to provide filtering within the, uh, within the buildings. Um, they decided to move on that and now we're saving those, uh, almost $200,000 a month costs. Uh, it was for pipe repairs, uh, walls busting out, gym floors buckling, um, flooding. There were so many issues that were going on and we were just wasting so much money. And that one suggestion, out of my many suggestions, but that one suggestion saved the district millions. I know I can do that on, on the city council level as well. So again, my platform hasn't changed. Anyone that knows me, knows my platform. Uh, anyone that don't, doesn't know me, uh, just, just review what I've been saying here. You can go on my Facebook page and, and review, uh, all of the stuff that I've done as a citizen over the last six years and as a legislator. Um, my record is totally public. That's it for now.
Thank you. Ms. Turner?
So, I'm not a politician. I don't pretend to be a politician. What I am is a social justice advocate. I'm a social justice advocate in my heart and I'm a social justice, justice advocate by way of my experience, by way of my resume, and by way of my education. My platform is simply to improve the quality of life for the citizens in the East Ward. All the things that I named that I do, I, I intend to continue to do them, but I intend to do them on a higher level as a councilwoman. Again, um, I advocate for homeowners. I advocate for renters. I'm also a business owner. I have two businesses in the city of Orange. Um, I advocate for small business owners, families, the seniors. The services that I'm looking to implement are a carryover of the services that I've already implemented within the city of Orange. I intend to clean up the East Ward and bring pride in the East Ward. I intend to be a voice for all members of the East Ward. And again, and I just want to keep reiterating it, we need somebody in here that has a resume that includes more than their residents. We need somebody in here that has the tools to be successful. And I have the tools, I have the education, and I have the drive. Thank you.
This concludes the city council candidate debate.
Thank you.
Thank you. We can, we can take one question from each resident based upon the time period and the event.
Yes, because I have to work.
There's another debate coming up at 7:00. One question.
One question.
One question.
Okay.
I was interviewing a question.
Okay. No, I was saying, I was about to add, you do have, you were saying, you were saying all the education you have.
Sorry, excuse me. She won't be able to hear. Candidates can't hear.
You were making reference to the education and the tools you have. Uh, what kind of tools would you use to assist homeowners? There are lots of things beside water, but other things going on in town. And what ways would you, would you support the homeowners with your?
One, one, the, the, again, I talk about the East Ward having issues with trash. One, I think that the city could provide something simple as trash cans. I'm talking about the issues that's within the East Ward. We have a, a huge rat problem. I can't even go on my back porch because rats run straight across. So one, we could provide the, uh, broad daylight, broad daylight. It's an infestation. We could provide homeowners with trash cans, something as simple as that. While we're bringing, I said that multiple times, while we're bringing in these new, new developers, make them offer some sort of, um, grants to homeowners to fix their roofs or, or something like that. Uh, we can offer programs, the, the program that I bought my house under, an affordable house. So I was able to come in as a single mother, purchase my home, get my education, raise my children, educate my children. So I've heard members of our council say things like, we shouldn't be giving away services to those people. And those people are me. Those people are me. And I know that I've, I've, we talk about reciprocity and interdependency. I know that whatever, um, I, whatever credits that I assumed from the city in getting affordable home, I put back twofold in the service that I've added to the community. So if you ask the que, if you a- ask me the question, what could we do for homeowners? We can provide services. We can provide services like, uh, certain tax credits. We can help the, the tax, we can help the homeowners understand where their taxes are coming. Uh, homeowners don't understand why their taxes are raised. We can listen to the homeowners when they say vote for cannabis so that our taxes won't be raised. So those are just a, 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 a few things that we can do to assist homeowners.
It should be upon the administration and the council to educate the, the citizens, uh, especially with their taxes. Um, there are a ton of options where, uh, citizens and especially seniors can save money on their tax bills. We have the senior freeze. Um, there are a lot of seniors in the city that I've informed of that and some that have actually personally helped. So their taxes on a yearly basis are, are not raised, but are frozen at a specific amount. Um, that's something, even though it's mentioned, I'm not sure how much it's, uh, how much that information is transmitted to the public. Um, I'm not sure how much the residents seek it, but like I said, all of the residents that I, I know not only through the East Ward, but throughout the city, that's something that I educate them on constantly. Um, there are a number of options of, of, as far as, uh, implementing tax savings for their households, um, taking advantage of other opportunities to save money on their rents. Um, again, with the budget, that's strictly a municipal council decision. If the municipal council does not raise the tax rate, people's tax bills will not go up. It, it, it's, it's, it's that simple. It's that simple. The mayor provides a budget that, that he wants the council to review. The council, time and time again, almost all the time passes that budget. Um, there are cuts that citizens budget advisory committee, committee members, uh, put forth during public meetings that those, those suggestions are not, uh, taken into account. Um, even recently at a recent council meeting when, uh, uh, one of the residents, Ms. Wells, she, she actually asked the council and the council president, Kerry Coley, you know, did you actually read the citizen budget advisory committee's, um, suggestions? And he publicly said no.
No.
All right? That's who I'm running against. He publicly said no. I nev, even if I didn't read, I never would have said that publicly, but he boldly, he, he boldly said that. All right? When similar questions came, came up as, as me as a board member, I've always addressed the public and I've always made the changes or advocated for the changes publicly. All right? So, um, uh, uh, again, there are many, many great decisions and there's much great information that can be put forth to the public to help them not only monetarily, but just also quality, the quality of life issues. I do agree about the rat situation. Um, you got the canal, when that was cleaned out, the rats started spreading through the city. But we also have all of this redevelopment, something that I've opposed since 2016, this redevelopment, every time they tear down the abandoned buildings or they clear out the lots, which may have burrows, with that those rats are living in. You know, those rats come, come out of their homes or hiding places and just keep spreading through the city. Again, I've been in the city 40 years, never had a rat on my block until the past maybe eight months. Never, never. And I feel for the other residents in like the, the west and the south because I think it attacked them first. You know, depending on the redevelopment and, and depending on the cleaning out of that canal by the Harvard printing, uh, press building, you know, but it, it's a citywide issue now. And that's absolutely something I would, uh, address as far as pest control. Um, it, it needs to be addressed in a huge, huge way.
That concludes.
Thank you.